Welcome to the City Council of the City of Lathrop Village. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Protem Kanter. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stalling.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite everyone that's in the audience and council to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, can I get a motion to appro-- well, actually, no, to have a motion to approve the-- I was gonna say the disappearance, but I guess that's not the right word, the absence of Mayor Protem Kanter.
I make a motion that we excuse Mayor Protem Kanter.
The disappearance.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, he is official excuse. Next, the approval of the agenda, please. Would like to make a motion.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Guess it would not be with their-- all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. The agenda has been approved. The approval for the consent agenda, which will be the approval of minutes August 19, 2019, council study session, and approval of minutes August 19, 2019, council meeting, and the approval of minutes for September 9, 2019, council study session.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. The consent agenda's been approved. Next, we have a consideration of the approval of dispersment reports. First one up is gonna be the dispersment period of August 1, 2019 through August 15, 2019, with this, which is $55,083.24.
I'd like to motion to approve the dispersment report for the period 8/1, 2019 through 8/15, 2019, for $55,083.24.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion regarding the expense report for that period? Or, excuse me, dispersment report for that period? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. That dispersment report is approved. Second one is for the dispersment period of September 16, 2019 through September 30, 2019, in the amount of $584,832.86.
I make a motion that we accept the dispersment period 9/16, 2019 through 9/30, 2019, for $584,832.86.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion off of the reports? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. That period is also now approved. Now we have the consideration of the acceptance of department reports.
I make a motion that we accept the department reports.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. The department reports are approved. Next on the agenda are-- is public comments, and this is for items that is not on the agenda. And first up, we will have the-- sorry, the--
I'm gonna give the certificate for Pastor Maurice Hardwick.
Yes, exactly. Sorry, my packet is just a little not in order. So, let me try to find this one. So, would like to explain, or you want me just to read it?
Just read it.
Okay. I'm not gonna read, though. Can I just paraphrase? Oh, okay. Pastor Hardwick, are you here?
Yes.
Stand up, somebody.
So, I did hear about this, and that this is-- you stopped a young man from committing suicide by jumping off of the 696 overpass.
Yes, ma'am.
Very commendable of you, and so you gave the certificate of recognition for that. So, I will read it, because I do appreciate that. Whereas Pastor Maurice L. Hardwick, also known as Pastor Mo, is a native of Detroit and the pastor of Power Ministry in Southfield, and whereas he has proven to be dedicated by his years of service, particular to the well-- particularly to the well-being of the youth in the community, and whereas presentation of this award represents an effort to give recognition and show appreciation for Pastor Hardwick, because on August 5, he stopped a young-- sorry, a young woman from jumping off the I-696 overpass, and therefore it resolved that Mayor Michael Garrett, the Lathrop Village City Council, and all of our citizens, we hereby congratulate you on your dedicated service to our community. Thank you. If you wanna say some words, please feel free. Yep, step foot to the microphone.
Good job. May I wanna say I'm honored. I thank City of Southfield Lathrop, I thank Council President, all the council for distinguished certificate of honor. It was my-- it was a bittersweet pleasure to be there, a very tough moment in my life, making that call to get involved in all of what is, what if it went wrong, you know? But I saw the young person was just ready to give up, and I have a heart for young people and a heart for God, and I knew that I had to do something to act fast, and I just went for life. The Spirit led me to go for life, and I'm glad that that person is still living and set an example to our citizens around the country, Southfield, Detroit, within Detroit, that we should get involved and stick and stay for each other when people at their lowest moments of their life. It makes a difference to get involved and help people, and I'm happy to have had that moment and hope that it does well for somebody else in that person's life. Thank you, Southfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very commendable. Very good. Where's your ministry? Where's your ministry?
I serve at Power Ministries right here in Southfield. We owned last year in Civic Center Drive at the World of Heaven Building.
Okay. God bless you. Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you, ma'am.
And I appreciate that. This is-- which we'll get into our agenda later. This is Suicide Awareness Month.
Oh, really?
Yep, and it is-- I remember five years ago that going to my own nephew's funeral for his suicide, someone jumped off of the 696 bridge in Burlington Hills and was, you know, they were successful, though I stopped them. So, it really is touching to me that you took time, because there's so many people that don't take the time to care about other people, you know, to even stop and just ask how they're doing, let alone to save their lives. So, that is-- I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that.
I'll thank you so much.
Shepherd of the God's own heart. That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, are there any more comments for the public?
Yes. Oh, all right. Mike and Debbie.
I'm Debbie Holtland Dunn. You guys have seen me here a few times before.
Three times.
This is my husband, Mike. I think you guys know me well enough to know that I come here in times that I am thanking you for things that you do and how our community is working. Unfortunately, tonight is not one of those nights for me.
And I'm Mike Dunn. Debbie and I both live at 27440 Lathrop Boulevard, and we moved here in 1991. We've been residents for nearly 28 years now. We were attracted by the community diversity, both racial, religious, sexual orientation, the home values, and the neighborhood stability, and those have all proved true over these 28 years. In addition, over time, we came to appreciate the quality of city services and what they meant to the stability and community here. And however, we believe that those-- some of those services have deteriorated in the last five to eight years, and we wanna present some of recent examples of correspondence from city officials to city residents that we believe are potentially intimidating, harassing, and threatening, and they certainly are completely inappropriate and unnecessary. And these correspondence examples are not resident-friendly and do not serve a useful purpose, in our view. So, and I can provide copies. The first one I wanna deal with is dumpster fees, and I've shared this issue with both Saleem and Ian back in June. When we bought our house in 91, we-- it just had a patio on the back, and we subsequently built a deck in 1993, and now 26 years later, it needs repair. It was a wooden deck, treated lumber and cedar, and in the spring, I asked some of our neighbors who I'd seen with dumpsters down the street, and asked them if they had any recommendations for a dumpster rental company, and they both provided me with the name of Priority Waste. So, I rented dumpster on Thursday, June 7 through Monday, June 11, and I proceeded over the weekend with the help of my brother to tear down most of our deck, except for the substructure, the flooring, the sides, the railings, et cetera. And the dumpster was removed on Monday, the 11th, and then I proceeded to receive in the mail, first the letter dated June 7, that I received on Tuesday, the 11th, after the dumpster was gone. And it basically said I was not in compliance. It was from the code enforcement officer, Jim Wright, and it basically said I was in violation of the filing, but it was kinda vague. Dumpster required permit, obtained required permit, but it didn't say any codes, and I was unaware of that.
Heartful.
Yeah, so I was unaware of that, and subsequently then, on Saturday, the following Saturday, the 15th, I received a letter dated the 12th that said final notice, and it proceeded to say, you know, failure to comply, deemed a misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not less than $100, nor more than $500, and/or imprisonment of not more than 90 days or any combination thereof. So, that was sent the first business day I could possibly have done anything about it, that Wednesday, and I immediately, I researched, I got online, found out that, you know, what the process was, had the form already filled out, went to the-- went to City Hall on Monday morning, the 17th, paid my $25, but I also asked if this is the normal practice, to have so little time in between notices and then to proceed with that kinda notice where threatening-- threatening me with a, you know, jail time for not paying a $25 fee. I thought that was kinda ridiculous. And I was told that probably what happened was that no, that wasn't the normal practice. Probably what happened is two different people, somebody sent out the first notice and another city employee sent out the second notice. But, okay, and I happened to see both Ian and Saleem at We Meet Neat the next Saturday out at the children's garden, and just, you know, we just told them about that, and they can share whatever reaction they had. And then, second example here is, we were just-- Deb came home kinda upset today. A friend of ours got a notice that was actually from the police chief, and it said-- so I'll just read this one, and it's entirely short. Dear Resident, Life gets busy and things are forgotten. After review of our records, we found that you did not renew your pet license for this calendar year. The current licensing fee before March 1, $6; on or after March 1, $11. But then the second paragraph, under Article 2, Section B, quote, "Any person violating this section shall be responsible for a municipal civil infraction punishable by a civil fine. The fine for each violation of any provision of this chapter punishable as a municipal civil infraction shall be $250 for that first offense, $500 for the second, and $750 for the third or subsequent offense unless otherwise specified. At this time, the cost for renewing your pet license is $11. A copy of license renewal form is attached to this letter for your convenience. Thank you for advan-- thank you in advance for your attention to this matter, respectfully, Scott McKee, Police Chief." And so, it turns out, in this case, their pet died last year. And so, instead of handling this as, hey, you know, our records show that your dog, Spah, or your cat, Muffy, was licensed last year, can you let us know if you still own the pet, and if so, please, please renew? You know, you have this kind of-- this kinda language where you're threatening, you know, fines of hundreds of dollars. And I think, you know, both of those are illustrative of-- we just--
Not our community.
Yeah, this is not our community. I mean, this is-- this is not how we handle things here in Lathrop Village, or at least not how we used to. And, you know, we're starting to see this kind of attitude at the national level and, you know, intimidation and behavior outside the norms, and we certainly wanna-- don't wanna see that in Lathrop Village. I mean, this, you know, I just find it really, really appalling, raw, whatever adjective you wanna use.
Well, that can make you feel better about the dog license, I got the same letter today. So, but--
But most people who are purchasing licenses are doing it every year. I feel like the vast majority of Lathrop's residents want to follow the rules, because that makes us a better community. We had friends, fortunately, this spring, when we had an anomaly in our weather, and it was raining every single day, our pond was in our backyard, but we had many friends whose ponds were in their front yard, and their lawn services wouldn't cut, because their lawnmowers couldn't go through that water, and weed whips couldn't do it either. Instead of, as a community, coming together, we have garden companies. Instead of trying to figure out ways that we could post to people how to better take care of the grass that's growing through the water, people are getting citations when their lawn company still couldn't do anything about it. And actually, until today, when my friends got this note about their dog, I was gonna let all this go, but I-- and I talked to a couple of you guys about the city permit for the park, and I just wanted some more information. That also was occurring when we were doing a children's garden event, and so we wanted to know, oh, if we're doing Weed Meet Neat, or if we're gathering children and their families together, do we need to have a permit to come to our own park? And I understand that when we are having other people from other communities come to the community room, that there needs to be some rules and some regulations, but then, you know, we were working a few weeks ago, and a city employee says, hey, the permit sign's working. We have less and less people in the park. And I said to my friend, is that what the point is? Because if that is, that is not what Lathrop is. In our community, even if we don't know people, if we hear that something is happening that is significant in their life, we give food out to them, we give clothing out to them. If they've had a fire, we get things together to help them out. And so, this kind of, I don't know if it's-- if this is what happens in larger communities, maybe it does, but to me, this is not how we should be treating our residents and each other in our community. That's just not who we are. I don't think it's who we are.
Well, I will apologize for the wording of it, of the delivery of it, but I also know personally, and I am involved with a lot of the communications, if you knew how many people call in, email, text us on things that they will call repeatedly about. The dumpster, for instance, you don't know how many calls we might have received about the dumpster. Should've been back-to-back? No, it should not have been back-to-back. Was that strong? Absolutely, that was strong. But it's also where we have one set of residents that's demanding code enforcement on a regular basis, and then it's where we have handled it in such a neighborly way before, and things are changing. And I've noticed that, that no one is going next door any longer and saying, hey, you know, you're not supposed to have a car on all flats in your driveway, or something like that. So, it's kind of, the city is in a, kind of a weird position, because we have to also handle both situations, if that makes sense. Someone's complaining, someone's not following the rules. I must admit, and I'm just being honest, I was a little taken aback by the letter about the dogs, but my first thought was, I did forget. I forgot, and what it made me do was come, and I understand--
There's a whole different-- you know, why should the police chief, why should the first--
And I'm gonna--
It's a first response from the police chief? I'm sure you might have--
Because also--
--more important things than to be following up on dog licenses.
The reason why I didn't balk at it completely is because I also know, on the other hand, we have an issue with loose dogs, and we have dogs attacking other dogs, and we have dogs attacking people, so knowing--
So, that's a specific incident to me, then you go to those people.
But if we don't know where the--
That doesn't become a whole--
No, if we don't know who the dogs belong to, which, and if you, I don't know if you all are on the Village or not, there's tons of pictures and everything else with dogs on there, who does this belong to? And so, I fully agree, wording, words matter. Words matter.
And process, and step, a stepped process.
All of that matters, and then that's one thing that we can all talk about in trying to figure out a different way to soften the way it was. I think, and I'm speaking for you, and tell me if I'm wrong, it's just to say, this is the section, to kind of, to--
Well, then, that's the first re-- the first paragraph could be a first note, or a postcard even, because like I said, the, yes, people do forget, but if you're licensing your dogs for, you know, year after year, then you've either forgotten, or that dog is gone.
Right.
And to get that kind of notice, if I'd have gotten that right after Sparty died, and some of you people knew Sparty, I would've wanted to strangle somebody.
But we also need people like you to come up here and say, hey, we also need to figure out a different way of delivery, and we're finally fully staffed, we're trying to make sure that everybody's in compliance. I mean, like I said, I received the same letter, which actually made me crazily happy, because I didn't differentiate between anybody. But wording matters, because that did take me back when I saw the amount for not being licensed. So, I appreciate that you all brought it to our attention, and the fact is that we do need to have a way of being more neighborly in delivery.
I feel like we've gone-- the pendulum has gone--
Way on the other side.
--way over to the other side. You know, we were a community that really spoke to each other and cared for each other, and now we're just, you know, here.
I mean, that's three examples this year.
This is, we're gonna put you in jail for your four days of not-- and I take full responsibility for not being able to continue to look on site, to find where the permit and how much it was. I take full responsibility for that, but it's ridiculous to get a note like that.
And I--
Without even--
I think we agree.
I'm acknowledging that I agree with you, and I am saying, going forward, we will figure a way to deliver notices much softer, and I think that we also will make sure our process with code enforcement, it is going to happen, but we will have it where there is a process of when you receive first notice, second notice, even though I think we do have the process, so it just needs to be, need to understand why it happened back-to-back. So, acknowledging--
That's that one, but really, is that, is, should the police chief be the first level for somebody not renewing your dog license or cat license? I mean--
So, we don't have animal control. We don't have animal control department. We don't have--
He's human and animal, is what you're saying.
So, that's what he-- that's his job. No, sorry. No, but he--
Just see, only two letters went out, so I was the same thing.
Oh, I'm sure.
Did you say only two?
Only two.
Forty-two.
Oh, I was gonna say, well, I'm one.
I'm like the man at all, man.
I just wanted to sort of pretty new what the penalties were, and tried to make it as soft as possible. It was $11--
But he's a police officer.
But I want everybody to know that if they don't comply, there is a large fine, so the $11 is a whole lot easier than the, whatever $250 is for not complying. So, that's all it was for, is just--
I get the point.
And that's a recent change, so the animal ordinance was recently updated, and they, we did increase those fines substantially, so I think, you know, and that, you know, I didn't get the letter, but to educate those individuals that do register and license their dogs, that forgetting to do it could be costly, and likewise with the code enforcement. Code enforcement officer, those are misdemeanors, and while there's probably a 0% chance anybody goes to jail for a code case, they are required to put what the possible penalties are on there, so that's why, and sometimes that language is harsh, but I agree, the timing and that usually there's, there's an opportunity to respond to that initial notice before you get the, all right, you're ignoring me, it's time for a tick. And then you get the--
And I also notice, I must admit, within the, I don't know, last two or three years, there's been an uptick in complaints.
You know what happened? One thing that's happened is like during the last election, we heard a lot from a lot of people that they want increased code enforcement. So, as a council, we said, okay, let's increase code enforcement, let's get this, our guy out there more, looking around, but I agree with you, I think it's gone too far in that the notices are way too close together. This is not the first time we've heard this. I've heard this on multiple occasions, that you get a notice one time, then the next day it's another notice, that's more with the harsh wording and stuff. So, we gotta look back and make sure our process is better, because that's, I agree with you, that's not how it should be in our neighborhood. So, I think we, we'll take a look back as a council and make sure the process is right, that the enforcement officers know, like what, that, you know, they should give a first warning, but the next warning shouldn't be the next day. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, and just so you know, when we saw, when we talked in the park, we actually brought it to council that, the next session, so we talked about that, and so, when you got the second notice, I think I--
Well, I already had the second notice.
You already had the second--
Yeah.
So, we did discuss it, and I know we had some communication internally with Jim Wright, so, yeah, we should've circled back, especially me, I should've said, hey, we did address it, and we spoke to Jim Wright, and it's gonna be taken care of, but you're right. I don't want anyone to think that the national dialogue that's happening in Washington is gonna trickle down to Lathrop. We're just not there yet, I'm sorry.
But so we never--
We'll never get there, yeah.
But I understand, there's a lot of changes going on, and yes, we have had significant amount of pressure from those die-hard residents that want code enforcement, but at the same time, we need to find a balance. You're right.
Listen, I'm a total rule follower. I get made fun of, especially at my age, for how I follow rules. I believe in it totally, but there's a way in which to handle it.
I agree.
You're past our three minutes.
I agree.
One of the things that I want to observe, too, is that we used to have these police reports with dog issues through it, so--
This is not my first time to City Council.
I know.
I know.
You've heard them all, but thank you.
So, I'll just let you know, my check, I gave her the check, put it on camera, it's there.
And our next step is to have a kinder, gentler, softer first sentence. We're gonna figure something out in the--
It sounds like your first paragraph was great, and it was just, yeah.
You have to speak to the microphone. So, we apologize for that.
Yeah, we do. We have--
Really do.
I want to greatly apologize to the mayor, I think I said council, I did not properly address you, Miss Mayor. I wanna make sure I fix that and make sure I wanna thank all of you, the council and the mayor. I'm sorry if I did not say that, I wanna clear it up.
It's okay, and also, we're not Southfield Lathrop, but that's okay, too, I let that go.
You're right. She just said, you gotta do things right.
It is okay. I appreciate that, it's okay. If that's the only thing I have a issue with, I'm not called. I'm having a good day there. Any other public comments?
Just one more observation before they address. So, I think this was very productive that you two came and said, hey, listen, we've been here for a while, we need to make some changes or make some adjustments, and I think we should all hear that. We really need to continue to hear that.
That's what we're here for.
We love the feedback.
And just to respond, I mean, Deb participates often.
Yes.
I come rarely, but when she came up with that letter, that was sort of the last drop for me, it's like, hey, you know, so.
I understand that.
You can also email any of us anytime, and we all do respond, anytime you have an issue.
But I think that might be one of the problems, is that the one-on-one is, you know, people are hearing singly, but it's, but then, that's all that then happens, and maybe one person's situation is solved, but then a person on the other side of Southfield doesn't, hasn't heard that, and then, and they're still upset. Do you know what I mean? I mean--
We gotta close the loop.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. Don't apologize.
Hi, I'm Carla Hardaway. My husband--
Hi, I'm Carla Hardaway, my husband Andre. We moved to Lathrow Village in, on, actually, June twenty-third, so it's been ninety days. We bought the house June tenth from Old Park, Michigan. We were residents there for almost ten years. Since moving, we've been targeted, uh, racial profiled by neighbors that we don't know. It started the second week that we moved here. People walking past with their dogs, and their dogs pee, poop on the yard, whatever. We didn't say anything the first two weeks. We have two dogs too, we have two dogs. They don't even use the bathroom on the front, they go in the backyard. We don't let them out. So we kindly asked them, can you not let your dog, with us sitting on the front porch, poop right in front of us and not get it up? So we filed a complaint. The one neighbor came back and threw a bag of crap in our yard. He's on camera. We came up here, we filed a police report. They got him, because they didn't know who it was, it was clear as day, gave him a ticket. A week later, I, I assume these people didn't know that my husband had a wife and my son, because I leave different times of the day. Um, "What are you looking at, D-head?", is what she said to my husband. He was like, "Excuse me?" He said, "I can look at whatever I want, standing in my yard, this is America, it's free." She go and say a couple other words, leave. Last week, they had a lost dog. This is only one of the many incidents, and I'm like, is this a game? At first, until I finally came and filed the police report last Sunday, last Saturday night. A couple riding their bike, they said they were looking for a dog. This is like nine-thirty at night. We already knew about the dog that was missing earlier during the day, little black, black and white dog. When the dog runs away, they don't come two blocks down and sit at a neighbor yard. So they're at our corner, these people come by on bikes, and my husband said, "There's no dog here, there's people already looking." Three little girls, a couple different people had already came through. The dog wouldn't be in our yard, sitting in the front yard, for one, if it ran away. The girl yells out, "Why did you move here? You're not wanted here, nobody likes you, um, the neighbors don't like you, and I know that this bothers you, so I'm gonna continue to come and harass you." And we had her on videotape, of course, and her voice, but I'm not able to, um, give you guys that as, um, recommended by a third party, not to provide that to you guys, because this is ongoing. It's been a week of the week. I thought it was a game at first. We see some of the neighbors, we don't even know. We wave, hi, whatever, but I don't know if they would just decide, we own this corner house, it was empty for almost a year. We did all kinds of, spent money, beautification, um, trees, plants, flowers, lights, gates. They know the house when they come to the corner, because it wasn't like that. One of the other officers told me, yeah, they drove through the fence, they used to be there twice. It used to be a different kind of fence. So I don't know what the behavior is, or whoever lived there prior to this, because we asked them, we put signs, we put gates, "No dogs, please don't let your dogs poop", they took the signs out the yard, to where now we have them, um-
Zip tied.
Yeah, zip tied on the gates.
So they can't steal them.
So they can't steal them. Just little crazy stuff that, we didn't think that it happens in Lathrow Village. My husband, family still lives there, he grew up in Lathrow Village. They've been living here over thirty-five years. And they still live here, and everybody's amazed that this kind of behavior. And yeah, it does come down from the national, uh, uh, level, as far as like from Washington. People feel that they can do and say whatever they can right now, at this day and time. I hate to see it. I seen it with my own eyes, I was like, are they stupid? Because this is the day and age, everyone has cameras, and we have cameras all around our house. I spoke to several officers up here, and they said, that's the best thing, and to keep following these reports, but we shouldn't have to. We've been here ninety days. This started happening after two weeks. And it's, haven't been any males they've been offering yet.
So, um-
Let them finish.
So, I'm gonna let-
Just briefly, I just wanna thank, uh, the Lathrow Village Police Department, Chief McKee, uh, for his assistance. They've been very instrumental in assisting us, uh, should we say, through this ordeal that we're experiencing. Because they've been very instrumental and helpful. And also, I wanna thank you, Mayor Kelly Garrett, and City Council for hearing us. But, uh, this hate speech, this rhetoric that we've been encountering is totally uncalled for and unnecessary. We're good neighbors, we take care of our property, we mind our business, we don't approach upon others' rights. We had a big party that we have annually every year, um, but we haven't on the first.
On the first.
On the first. You know, when it's time to quiet down, it's quiet time or whatever, time for everybody to leave. We have to be conscious of other people's rights, but we're not receiving that same, we're not receiving the, the same thing. We're not. And for us, for a woman to come up in front of our house and to tell us, "When did you move here? You don't belong here, and if this pisses you off, I'm gonna be back every day just to piss you off." I said, "But I thought you were looking for a dog." "Oh, I have a new, uh-"
Cause.
"I have a new cause now, I have a new cause now, and that's to piss you off." So that shows her motivation and intent was to exacerbate the situation. Because I already advised another search party earlier, "There's no dog here at my corner", at, not my corner, but on my property, because they came to the corner, it was shining lights in our yard, and my dogs were there, and they were agitated. Because people have been coming past, tapping on our gate like this. "Hey buddy, hey buddy!", teasing our dogs. So now, I have to be in the yard with my dogs, when they're out, okay? Because they're trying to exacerbate the situation, okay? And then when that happens, okay, the first party left, okay? And then, the white female and white male come on bikes, strolling along with their flashlight at the corner, riding trees like this, and my dogs are out. They're coming back out again, and they became agitated, so I said, "Come on, come on, come on, guys." I pull them back in, I'm gonna try to de-escalate. I just merely said at first, "No dogs are here, no dogs are here." There was another search party here, the only dogs here are mine, unless you're saying I stole someone's dog that was loose. So then that's when she became combative, and stated that she has a new cause now, and that was to piss me off. So, like I say, it's not what you know, it's what you've proved. And that was her intent, and the hate speech that was associated, that, that came with that, showed her intent. "When did you guys move here? You don't belong here." Lathrow Village is over sixty percent black, and from my understanding, Louise Kelly Lathrow has long been dead. Maybe her ghost still exists, and some people may think that that's, that behavior is still acceptable, but we don't. We're not docile.
Okay, I understand that. Um, can I, uh, make a couple, uh, statements and address the gentleman and lady? So you live two houses from the corner on Lathrow Boulevard?
We live on the corner of Lathrow and-
You live on the corner, yeah. Right where the, right where the stop sign is, right.
That is correct.
Yeah, I understand that, and I'm familiar with, um, uh, two things. The house you moved into, yes, it had been vacant for well over two years, and prior to that, it was a, um, sort of like a, for adult, uh, it was like an adult home for adults that, that had special needs, some sort of special needs house. So, um, over the years, it has been that type of house. And I'm not saying it's a, it's a bad house, wrong house, or whatever, I'm just trying to get you to understand that I-
The history of it.
The history, and I know where you live. Um, so the incident you're referring to, uh, I believe, um, a police report was filed, and the individual that, uh, threw the, the feces on your property, um-
Right.
Was addressed by the police department, that issue-
They handled that.
That issue was resolved.
Well, what happened was other people joined the bandwagon, because when I emailed Kel to London, and stated that they were continuing to allow their dog to come past our property, and when our, when our dogs were tethered, because sometimes we sit in our garage too, and I have my dog tethered with me in the garage. They allowed their dog to come charging for my property towards my dog, okay? And they were still coming past, but then, like, uh, how do you wanna say what, I'm trying to look for the word here, taunt, like, you know?
Well-
Like trying to taunt and whatnot. So then other people joined the bandwagon, and were coming through, letting their dogs come up on our property taking cracks. So it, it was a taunting type of thing, okay? And then, just the other day, I had to file a police report, because an elderly European-American woman came past, let her dog, you and it all in the yard, I didn't say anything. I was in my door, I just happened to be in the door, I was about to get the mail, but I said, you know what, I'm not gonna come out, I'm gonna wait till she passes. Because people have a, have a habit of, of switching the, flipping the script, and saying that something happened when it didn't happen. So, I'm just standing there, and then she walks past my driveway, and at the foot of my driveway, she stops with her dog, and turns towards my dogs, and starts antagonizing. I didn't say anything, I just looked at her like that, and she says, "Uh, excuse me, why are you looking at me?"
So, um, let me, let me just, I, I'd like to stay on, on subject, so-
This is on subject, this is about harassment, no, no.
So, first and foremost, I will say that that's not acceptable, period. It's not, it's not acceptable, there's no excuse whatsoever that anyone has ever treated like that in, um, Lathrow. Um, so even given any kind of history on the house, or whatever, I apologize that that's something that you have to, or had to experience in being new to this community, because that's not how we-
Not even ninety days.
Yeah, if you told me, you told me to shut up and get out of here?
I mean, I, and, and I-
The European-American elderly female told me to shut up and get out of here.
I cannot even-
I applaud you.
I, I can't even, um, number one, could never imagine, and I'm really in shock at this point, that-
Can I have all of it?
That, that, that actually happened. Um, the only thing I would, uh, keep encouraging you to do is to report everything, um, to the police department, and, um, to let them handle it also, and I applaud you all for not taking matters into your own hands.
I totally applaud you.
Well, the next thing is to go to the TV stations and put the videos and the sound on, and let them hear it.
So, can't let us try to resolve-
Right, that's why, that's why we're here, instead of taking that route, because I'm like, not even ninety days, this is crazy.
That's why we're here now.
So, I've never seen anything like this, no matter where I live, even in Detroit.
No, I understand that. One, one of the reasons why I, I spoke up first, Ms. Garrett, is because, um, since I know where your house is, and I know exactly where Debbie and Mike's house is, you guys are roughly less than a block from each other.
Yeah.
I know, and, and in addition-
You guys probably didn't even know what we were going through.
No, and in addition-
No way, no way.
What we said was, wow, somebody's moved in, look how they're taking care of us.
Yeah, we, we talked about our property, right? Property, you know?
Oh, God.
I was actually walking by, I don't go by your house, I go around my block, but I noticed when you had the big party, I thought, wow, they're having a party there.
We invited the officers, and invited everybody.
But, but I have to- I understand that, but let me, let me just finish. So the reason why I brought up Debbie and Mike, and, um, the, the proximity of your house, your location of your house. I actually walk by your house every day, with my dog and, and everything. I say hi to everybody. I think the, the circumstances that you have gone through, it has escalated beyond normal relevancy, and I think that there's some misunderstandings going on. When you're talking about racial profiling on that block, and I know a lot of people on that block, including the side blocks, those people are very open-minded, this is not one of those, you know, these people are driving in with trucks and masks, this is not that situation. I think it has escalated beyond the point, and I think Chief could verify that, and I, I welcome you to try to build this bridge between Debbie, Mike, and whoever that has had that issue, because I'm almost certain that it has gone beyond the measure that you have just described. I think it's a big misunderstanding, I think it should resolve.
I'm going by the action itself.
I understand that, and I think-
From the action itself, it shows me, what it's showing us as a family, it's showing us, it's showing us, it's right there in black and white, okay?
I'm sure-
Anytime we make complaints to, 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 uh, Kel to London, okay, about this, about throwing crap in our yard and all this, oh, we're trying to figure out who's doing this. So we had to get surveillance cameras put in to find out-
I understand.
Who's vandalizing our property.
I understand your frustration.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just, we're, we're gonna, no.
I have to say this last thing.
No, I'm gonna stop it right now.
Let us say it.
Let me just say this last thing, and we're done, um, it really isn't about black and white.
It is about black.
That's why I wanted to stop it, before we even, when it first-
It's about communication.
So, I'm sorry.
It is about black.
I have a question though, for the chief. Uh, how, how far can this go before you can actually do something, uh, before the department can actually, uh, respond in a way that would not, that would discourage it from happening again? And when, when can you-
We're investigating it right now.
Arrest.
And it will be sent to the prosecutor's office. This is for them to evaluate based on circumstances from both parties, because obviously, you have one party seeing one thing, and another party seeing some other.
Who's the other party? So, and who's the-
Yeah.
He's not at liberty to discuss and investigate.
Number one-
Yeah, I did, I sure did. I did FOI everybody, I have to get it down here.
And we didn't threaten anyone, so they, yeah, so they tried to make it to the police station, not knowing I was coming up there, because I was standing in the doorway, and then they had somebody driving around in this truck, blinding it, and I went to the store, I was afraid that he would pull up in the driveway.
It sounds like though, he's-
It circled around, I gave the police the license plate, and they said, "Oh, well, this is not them, this is a, a young black African-American." I said, "What's that have to do with any? You can have friends that-"
And you have it on camera.
Well, I think Chief has it on camera.
No, I was in my vehicle when this-
Hello, hello. Okay, so, this is, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Um, I apologize again that that's what you have to go through, being a new neighbor, and I would never, ever, ever, and from what you're saying, to discount how you feel, okay? So I, I apologize from, from the depths of my heart that you have to go through that.
We all do, we really do, really do.
I, again, I can imagine, and I will just-
We all do.
We try to be a part of the community.
I get you.
And you, and you- And come to the events that they had, we were gonna join different, I was like, wait a minute, hold on.
I, I, I understand.
Maybe they think we're the people that used to live there, or this is enough.
I've lived here for more than, I've lived here for more than twenty years, and I've never heard something like this before.
Well, guess what?
So, I understand.
Now, what you know is what you can prove.
Exactly, and, and so what I'm saying is, it is a good community, and it, and maybe, maybe, maybe it's just one individual, or a couple individuals. So just follow up with the police.
Yes, sir.
They'll investigate it, they'll prosecute it, if it's, if there's, you know, if, you know, prosecutor has to make that decision, or whatever, but follow those measures. But, yeah, you shouldn't have to go through that, and I've, and, you know, it's shocking to kind of hear that in Lathrow, because-
It is.
Yeah, I mean, we're so integrated all throughout the city, that I wouldn't even have thought that that would happen.
So, um, again, that, it's, it's not the norm.
Yeah, it shouldn't happen.
It's not the norm, um, I'll just leave it at, it's not the norm. Um, so again, following up with, uh, the police department-
You know what, like I said, I spoke with Detective Sergeant Michael Zhang, and I said, "You know what, I don't wanna pursue this all the way." I said, "Just give him a warrant, tell him to stop harassing us."
No, I think that is something that you-
When she backed into the gate, when she backed into our gate at the corner there, and she displaced it, knocked the lights down and everything, the next day we fixed it. You know, so I'm like, you know what, whatever, just don't come around here harassing us. I'm not looking to pursue this. As I mentioned to Detective Sergeant Michael Zhang, I mentioned to, when I went downstairs to talk to him. I said, "You know what, just tell him to stop harassing us."
Really, that's all we want.
Can we just live and let live? Can we enjoy our home that we brought?
And, and as you should, and so, um, one thing that I would say, if you wanna, um, stay back after, is we can talk further.
Actually, we just wanted to provide you with some documentation, for you, represent, uh, council members, Don Stallings, and you as well.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you for, um, coming and-
And I thank you for allowing us to express ourselves.
Thank you, Mrs. Her.
I'm candid, I'm assertive, I'm not aggressive, but we're just really irritated about this whole situation. You know, we wanted to make Lathrow our home, you know, and where we live at, as a community, and not to be harassed.
We believe you will, yeah.
And stuff for hate speech, intimidation, and harassment, and vandalism, because what's next, a noose in my yard? KKK spray painted on my garage door?
So, as I said, um-
Oh, that is going on Kansas, so.
Um, but, uh-
No, thank you.
I think it's time to-
We wouldn't have never reported it until the lady said, "Where did you move from? You're not welcome." Blasey split, went to here.
I totally applaud you, the way that you, like, the way that you have handled it, and thank you for coming, and I know, I know, wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, you said yes.
Still on the public comment. Still on the public comment.
Public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm thrown off on something, just completely lost my train of thought. Um, so is there anybody else for a public comment? Here and then we'll close the public comment. Um, so, uh, to action requests, fiscal year two thousand eighteen-nineteen audit report, Plant Moran.
Alright.
Oh, thank you.
Is this on? Yes, okay. My name is Pam Hill, I'm an audit partner with Plant Moran, and I have here with me today Erin Sarver, who was the audit in charge on the city's audit- My name is Pam Hill, I'm an audit partner with Plant Moran, and I have here with me today Erin Sarver, who was the audit in charge on the city's audit this year. Um, I know we've gone through this, the financial results for the June thirtieth nineteen in a lot of detail with, uh, members of the council and management. So, we're going to be very brief, um, highlights of the audit process this year. Um, we do spend every year between two hundred and fifty to three hundred hours auditing the city's books and records. We are going to just briefly cover some of the financial highlights. Um, I do want to point out that the city once again received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive. Uh, we always like to say, if it was like a report card, it would be like getting an A-plus on your report card.
All right.
Um, so, we, we'll talk a little bit about the numbers, but I did want to talk briefly, um, about the process just a little bit. So, few members of council will remember, last year, uh, we gave a report, we had some best practices and some items for the city to consider. Um, with a lot of the changes in some vacant positions that had been at the city, there were some, um, internal control items that the city was working on. And so, I am very happy to report that we did not have any of those issues this year, in that, um, city's management, uh, both city administrator and, uh, the treasurer have really worked hard this year to implement a lot of new procedures and new processes, new policies that have been put in place, and, um, really just working together really good as a team, and it's great to see. And I think that shows through in the letter and the results of the audit this year. So, just kind of wanted to commend management for all their hard work this year, um, to try to improve the processes and controls over the city's finances. Um, so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Erin, and I will let him cover the financial results at a high level.
Thanks, Pam. Um, I'm just gonna go through a graph package that has been distributed to the members of council. If anyone in the audience would like to have a copy of this, the city treasurer, Pam, does have copies, for anyone that would like one to follow along. Um, so, if you want to turn to page number one of the graph package, um, this has our governmental fund revenue for the last four years. Uh, and our governmental funds for the city would include the city's general fund, uh, the local streets fund, the major streets fund, and capital projects fund. And, um, overall, revenue has stayed pretty consistent for the last four years, um, between around four and a half and five million dollars. And our largest source of revenue, uh, continues to be the property tax revenue of the city, which increased, um, from two point eight million last year to two point nine million this year. That is the, um, slight increase in property tax values with the increased, um, housing market. Uh, we'll proceed on to page number two. This, again, uh, we just talked about the governmental fund revenues, so this would be the governmental fund expenditures for the last four years. Overall, these have stayed very consistent for the last four years. Our largest expense as a city, uh, continues to be public safety, um, which last year was one million nine hundred and eleven thousand, and this year increased slightly to one million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We'll move on to page number three. Uh, so this graph here, um, really highlights, uh, kind of, the, the decrease in revenue the city has experienced as a result of a housing market crash that occurred in, in two thousand nine. So, in two thousand nine, the overall taxable value of properties within the city was at a hundred and eighty-nine million. It decreased to a low point in two thousand and fifteen of a hundred and seventeen million. Um, now, part of that decrease has been recuperated, the current property tax value is at a hundred and thirty-one million. But, uh, based on our projections, the city won't really recuperate that lost revenue fully until, um, fiscal year two thousand and thirty-four, um, as a result of Michigan having limitations. And we can move on to the next graph. That would be page four. Um, like I said, I just highlighted the decrease in revenue that the city has experienced, um, as a result of decreased property values. Um, in addition, the city also has, uh, been charged a little bit in revenue as a result of a decrease in state revenue sharing. Um, back in two thousand and one, the city would receive around five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year in state revenue sharing. Um, this decreased, um, to a low point in two thousand and ten of three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, it currently is back up to four hundred and three thousand dollars, but relative to date from two thousand and one to two thousand and nineteen, um, the city has lost, if that, um, constitutional revenue sharing would have stayed consistent at five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, the city would have had an additional two and a half million of revenue. And we can move on to the next page. So, page number five, this has the city's fund balance for the city's general fund. And this is showing the city's unassigned and assigned fund balance. So, using a very, uh, kind of a short-term viewpoint of the city's general fund, uh, these would be the resources that would be available in the short term to fund any kind of expenses that might come up. Um, so currently, as a percentage of the city's annual general fund expenses, there is forty-one percent of those expenses set aside for future use.
I think, like, the one thing to point out on this graph is that you see this kind of grown over the last four years. So, the city's savings account, or fund balance, whatever you might want to call it, um, has, has grown, uh, quite a few percentage points. And the reason why we point that out is because the last two graphs prior to that, Erin talked about all the revenue constraints that you have. So, when your revenue is constrained, the only way to keep adding to the savings is monitor your expenses, right? And, um, you know, we talked a lot about this, I think management has done a really nice job, um, monitoring the budget that is set and approved by council, and, um, that's the only way that you've been able to add to fund balance. And so, I think you should feel really good that you have a very good budget and monitoring system in place, um, in that you really have, um, walked the line on those expenses, especially, like I said, given the revenue constraints.
Uh, we can move to the last graph we have here on page six. Um, so, so we wanted to point out, you know, the city has had, uh, revenue constraints, but has done a good job keeping their spending in check. But we also wanted to give, um, we've talked more on the, in the short term, on what our annual expenses are, but we wanted to also point out the long-term liabilities that the city does face due to legacy costs. So, on the left side of this page, we have our, um, total pension liability, so the estimated future amount the city will have to pay to current active employees and retirees in the plan for their pension benefits. Um, now, this is, this is a closed plan, so any new employee that would start working at the city tomorrow, um, would not be eligible for this plan. They would just be eligible for more of like a traditional 401K plan. So, so this number is more, a little bit more fixed and determinable than, um, if it was an open plan. Uh, and, and that being said, the city has set aside five point nine million, um, of, of resources to help fund this liability. So, currently, the plan is seventy-three percent funded. Um, and then on the right side, we also have the total OPEB liability. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and that would be, um, healthcare that is provided to employees once they retire, um, from employment with the city. Uh, once again, this is also a closed plan, so any new employee would not be eligible for the, this plan if they were to start playing with the city tomorrow. Um, and the city is on a pay-as-you-go basis, so they, they're simply paying those premiums, um, as we do on a month-to-month basis. Um, but this is what an actuary has calculated would be, uh, the future amount needed to fully fund the expected future premiums until all members of the city are, are cost, no longer.
Yeah, so we bring this up because on a short-term basis, the city's making a lot of progress and doing very good. So, now that you've kind of, you know, you've gotten yourself into this, this good spot, um, it's taking a look at kind of some of these longer-term items, like your legacy costs and stuff like that, which is, this is a very common theme among many, many governments, not only in the state of Michigan, but in many, actually. The other thing I wanted to point out too, I mentioned how many hours we spend, um, you know, your team has to get ready for us. So, not only do they spend a lot of their time doing their regular job, they have to spend it getting ready for us, and then fielding all our questions and everything while we're here in the field as well. Um, and I really would just like to thank both Cheryl, Pam, Erin, um, really the whole team, um, council. I mean, we really touch all departments, um, within the city, might even love the chief every once in a while. So, uh, we really just want to say thank you for the professionalism that we receive here, really helps to, to make our jobs, um, a lot more fun, because we actually do like auditing, so, um, but no, we really do appreciate the professionalism that we receive, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, I need a motion to accept the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen audit.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Just want to congratulate, um, uh, Cheryl and Pam again. Uh, I remember last year, we were, we had a little, few concerns, and it, we're really proud of you to get an A-plus.
Mm-hmm.
We're very proud of you, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
Any other discussions?
Yeah, I just hope we, this congratulatory, uh, statement makes it back to villagers.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the fiscal year audit has passed or accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have consideration, uh, for the agreement between the city of Lathrow Village and the city of Ferndale regarding use of southwest storage area.
Mayor and council, this is the annual agreement with the city of Ferndale for the use of their southwest storage yard as a transfer site for the leaves. This is for the time period of October one, two thousand nineteen, to the end of the year, December thirty-one. The cost is unchanged at one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Forty-five.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for it?
I make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Lathrow Village and the city of Ferndale regarding the use of the southwest storage area as a transfer site for leaves in the amount of one thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Next, we have the consideration of approval of city of Lathrow Village Public Participation Plan.
Mayor and council members, this is, it begins on page one fifty-eight of your packet.
Yep.
And the public participation plan is a part of the best practices that are recommended from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation as part of their redevelopment-ready communities program. So, this has already gone through the, um, the, uh, the vetting from the planning commission, um, based on the recommendations and involvement of our engineers and planners from Giffords Webster, and some of the, um, updates from the last time it was adopted in two thousand and fourteen, include, uh, making certain that key objectives are met, including, um, involving residents, utilizing effective and equitable engagement tools, educating the community, developing and maintaining staff expertise and support participation, and providing, um, a transparent record of public engagement. So, that is now before you, um, it was approved by the planning commission at their August twentieth meeting.
Thank you.
Very good.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Lathrow Village Public Participation Plan.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll have the consideration of the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the Lathrow Village Code of Ordinances to amend chapter thirty, article two, to add division one, which regulates illicit discharge in the city.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, this is, as you indicated, the second reading, this was introduced last month, there were no changes from the first reading. And just to briefly review, this was language, ordinance language suggested to us by the, what was formerly the Michigan Department, Department of Environmental Quality, uh, to regulate stormwater, discharging the storm into the stormwater sewage system. This has, in all reality, very little impact on our city and our residents, but it is something that's being regulated or recommended at the state level, that all communities have this uniform language so that, uh, it's easier for the, them to carry out inspections, monitoring, and ensure compliance.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to amend the Lathrow Village Code of Ordinances to amend chapter thirty, article two, to add division one, which regulates illicit discharge in the city.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, doesn't the, the state have language that, um, we've adhered to when we had an issue with the tank? I mean, this is basically the same language, but we're bringing it down to local level.
Uh, well, this is a little bit different than the tank, um.
Not necessarily the tank, but the, there's a, uh, drain next, right at the, um, the door entrance, which, um, connects to the Rouge. So, that, when we had an issue a couple of years back, that language was, we basically had to adhere to that language.
Well, there, there have always been standards that, uh, as far as, uh, any discharging, they're, they were controlled by what's called an NPDES permit. Those are issued nationally by the EPA, so there's always been standards with, with respect to that. This is, again, this is slightly different, these are, these are, this ordinance is aimed primarily for industrial users that are illegally discharging into a storm sewer. So, like I indicated, it's gonna have very little to no impact on Lathrow, but, uh, it is something that the state is requesting so that there's uniformity with, with, from municipality to municipality, so the languages, and it allows them, like, indicated, it's easier for them to inspect, monitor, and ensure compliance.
Okay.
It was second, we had discussion, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None in favor, motion passes. Next, we have the, uh, consideration of SIMCOG Infrastructure Asset Management Program application.
Mayor and council members, this begins on page one eighty-three of your packet, and it is a grant app, application to digitize the, um, infrastructure for the city, including the drinking water distribution, sanitary sewer collection, and stormwater systems. Um, they would essentially pay for the work that would be performed by our engineers, again, with, um, Giffords Webster, and the deadline for the application is September thirtieth.
Thank you. Any motion for it?
Make a motion to consider and approve SEMCOG's Infrastructure Assessment Management Program application.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the consideration for a motion to approve the city clerk's office being open on Saturday before all elections from seven AM to three PM.
I make a motion to consider, to approve, uh, the city clerk's office being open on Saturday before all elections from seven AM to three PM.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I have just a question, I know that a lot of the, uh, election laws shifted for this election. Has it, uh, has it, have you seen any differences in registration and?
There has been an increase.
In, uh, absent voter applications. So, I think with the new law, and with them taking away the reason, and you don't need a reason to vote absentee, will be more encouraging for people to choose that option if that's better for them. So, so, um, to that day of voting, what other, um, ID do you, is mandatory? What is the ID, with the new law?
Well, it's your driver's license, your state ID, your, uh, passport, or any type of school ID that you may have, government ID that you may have will work as well.
No affidavits or anything, you have to have, okay.
You can still do the affidavit if you go through.
Okay.
The line and say that you don't, yeah.
Okay.
We do have that option as well.
So, just so.
And this is a new law, this, for the office being open on this day. We could either be open on Saturday for hours, or however many hours, Saturday and Sunday, but this works out better for, for the clerk's office.
So, just so we're clear, um, the individuals that's checking identification, they won't reject a driver's license that doesn't have the star in the left corner, because the, I think the state is, the state is mandating that the star represents citizenship or something to that effect that they're gonna be imposing in the next couple of weeks here? There's a deadline to have, uh, individuals that have valid license.
No, we're looking at your.
So, you just, you just look at the driver's license.
Your ID, absolutely.
Okay, got you, okay, thanks.
You do not have to have an ID to, um, vote, you do not have an affidavit.
Thank you, just wanted to make it clear.
Affidavit is located on your application to vote, so when you come into the office and you fill that out, and flip it over, and you complete the affidavit, if you don't have a picture ID.
That's what I really wanted us to say on, that you, okay, thank you.
That is true.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution number one one approval, uh, for the. All opposed, the resolution number 111 approval of the clerk's office being open fast. Next, we have the consideration for approval of the resolution to waive all penalties for late and non-filing property transfer affidavits.
Mayor and council members, this begins on page 191 of your packet, and according to state law, it requires property owners to notify the assessing office in the local unit of government when there's a transfer of ownership within 45 days of the transfer. The law also provides for penalties when that does not occur for those late or non-filers. The Oakland County Equalization Assessing Office had asked that we formalize our past practice of actually having a resolution adopted by city council, which says that they will, we are willing to waive such penalties. And that's the resolution before you, to waive all penalties for late and non-filing property transfer affidavits.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the resolution to waive all penalties for late and non-filing property transfer affidavits.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Question, you mentioned Oakland County assessors. Is this, is this something that's happening throughout Oakland County, this waiving the fees?
Well, it's my understanding that they're asking all of the communities to have a resolution in place to indicate what their preference is. You can either assess the penalties and fees, you can waive them, or you can leave them up to the discretion of the city administrator. And the past practice in Lathrow Village has been to waive them. So we're just formalizing that.
So going off of what council and the silent says, so is there going to be a certain time limit that they have the affidavit in, or is it just?
It's still the 45 days that is required. We're not assessing them the penalty fine for that. It's in their best interest to ask for this to be in place because otherwise they could be paying the higher rates for property taxes.
After 45 days, then another penalty kicks in?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Not a penalty, no penalty.
I mean, you're waiving the penalty after 45 days.
Yes.
Okay, so how long do they have to pay it again?
That's what I'm saying, they don't.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be within 45 days, but nothing happens if they pass 45 days.
Yeah, what is the?
Well, then the collection, I'll let Pam answer this one, but then the normal collection process goes into effect.
With these penalties, they have 45 days to put in their transfer affidavit. Most of them we do get before 45 days. There are some, maybe businesses or something, you don't get them in, but the tracking of the penalty, trying to get the money for the penalty, those would take up so much time for the staff, and we're a small office, that we don't have the additional staff to track all that stuff. So that's why, the past practice coastal has waived it.
So what was it last year? We were collecting a fee last year, right? Weren't we collecting a, weren't we charging a fee, sorry?
There's no fee with the property transfer affidavit. In the statutory penalty is $5 a day with a maximum of $200.
Okay, so you're saying waive that, just make it 45?
Yeah, because we would have to track it and then try to get it back and that, and it would be more costly to the ministry of staff to take care of that and do it than what we would get.
But why were we collecting $5 for that? I don't, I don't guess.
That's what the state laws.
Okay, all right.
So do we have to-
We should have waived that a long time ago.
Sorry.
Well, it has been waived.
It's been waiving it.
I mean, like, just don't have it, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we didn't have it.
Okay.
We just had to formalize it. Do we have to formalize it every year, or just?
No.
This is it, okay, all right.
They just want all the cities to formalize a resolution for it, if they're going to have it or not.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the resolution is approved. Next, we will have the adoption of the resolution honoring the National Recovery Month.
Any introduction?
Make a motion?
Any introduction?
Make a motion to?
You know, just, go ahead, you make the motion.
I make a motion to honor this month as National Recovery Month.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Can we get details on what the, other than?
It's regarding the opioid use.
So it is, it's from Oakland Community Health Network to increase awareness of substance use and the need for services. On September 20th, Oakland County had their 12th Annual Substance Use Recovery Celebration and Walk. So basically, it is honoring people that are going through substance recovery. Any other discussion?
So just a resolution, once we pass this, do we have any plans to maybe support Oakland County in getting information out, or, I mean, what's our, what's going to be our goal once we do this resolution?
To my knowledge, we don't have any actual education component associated with it other than the recognition and sharing that with Oakland County to know that we're partnering with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it has been adopted. And last, the adoption, the proclamation declares September a suicide prevention month in the City of Lathrow Village. Every year, we have adopted this resolution because September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. It's about 45,965 individuals die by suicide, and we just normally claim September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Let me make a motion that we accept September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
So, second.
So it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, what's the, what is the process by which we should automatically do this annually other than just to do a proclamation? Is there a way we can just kind of autopilot this? Because I feel that we've been supporting it over the last several years, and I think it's been strong support with prayer and with vigilance, as well as unifying people that have suffered loss, and at the same time, saving people that have issues. How do we go about just making it into this autopilot?
I think it's important to bring it up annually and not to just put it into autopilot, keep it on the forefront of people's minds and to discuss it. I would recommend, again, it's just making it an annual without actually discussing it and bringing it up.
I 100% agree.
So that you can pull it. I recently took the class, the Suicide Prevention Assistance Class, and it was just amazing information on what, on how to look out for it. So I understand. So I agree that we should openly bring awareness of it, and I know your heart really means, I want to support this all the time. That's really what you're saying.
Yeah, but not just, not just when it comes up, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, with an activity, with an event, that's what I'm saying.
So do these resolutions get posted anywhere? Like, do they go on our website at all?
Well, they're on the website as part of the keeping of the record. So in terms of our minutes, we can give it a special recognition or presence on the website if that's the desire. And also in regards to the question from council member Ferguson, when information and training is available through Oakland County, we share it with staff and particularly the first responders or police department so that they have access to that information and education as well.
Right.
Yeah, I would say if we, when we're doing resolutions like this, like the honoring National Recovery Month and the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, we should at least, maybe, yeah, post them separately on our website so at least when people go there, they can see them, and maybe post, post them on in the office or in the building somewhere too.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
So I used to have something in Lathrow each year for, for Suicide Prevention Month, and it was not well attended. So I stopped having it in Lathrow. So this is pretty much just, this is, I mean, this is all we have at this point. Just to let you all know, I'm not emotionally wrecked, but September is not only Suicide Prevention Month, it's also a month of my nephew died five years ago. So to have to go through it, which I, you know, I do because it's something that every September, this is it, this is what we have to go through and deal with. And it's a huge, it's a huge problem. The day that I left my class, I got a call from one of my team members that, whose daughter was on the phone, whose friend's daughter was on the phone with a 10-year-old that just committed suicide. So it's a real issue that has to be discussed because now that affected a whole, you know, whole group of young people, and it is very disturbing. So we have to make awareness of it, and it's increasing as we speak, so. Is there any other discussion of it? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the adoption, it's been adopted, proclamation's been adopted. City Administrator, do you have anything to go with the cause?
Thank you, yes. As you should be aware, the Yorktown newsletter was mailed out. Hopefully, everyone has already received their copy in the mail. The South Oakland County Mayor's Association meeting was most recent, the next one's going to be on October 16th, and we will join the communities of Birmingham, Royal Oak, Beverly Hills, and Berkeley in hosting it in Birmingham, and the guest speaker will be Oakland County Executive Dave Coulter. You have received the notices in regards to the construction on the I-696 11-mile service drive that is ongoing. I believe they're expecting the current pattern to continue through October 12th. The Summer in the Village Caribbean Fest was a great success. We had wonderful turnout, great participation. I gave you links to many of the videos that are celebrating that cause. The mayor was the queen of the festival.
And America not move the next day.
And the winner of the hula hoop contest.
And America not move the next day.
Also, we just had the AARP Michigan Hazardous, well, theirs was the Paper Shredding Day. And this past Saturday and this coming Saturday, we will have the Household Hazardous Waste, Electronics, and Paper Shred Day. That will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There was a question in regards to medical items that can be brought in, and that those are accepted, and those can include pills, liquids, needles. They have to be in a rigid container. The sanitary retention tank is in the process of being transitioned over to the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner. They have the keys to the building. They're working on the SCADA system and getting all of that in compliance. I'm looking forward to the next rain where Pam and I don't get those alarms at 3 o'clock in the morning. They always seem to come at 3 o'clock in the morning. National Voter Registration Day is being celebrated on a national level tomorrow, September 24th. The City of Lathrow Village is participating in that, and as well as the clerk has indicated, there are a number of Election Day activities that are going on for the upcoming election here. It's Tuesday, November 5th. Voting will be from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Are you going to talk about, okay, so I'll skip that part. There was a skunk with rabies reported just south of Lincoln and Southfield Road. So be cautious when approaching critters. The Road by Village Town Hall, the next one is tomorrow evening, that's September 24th at 7:00 p.m. here at the community room. Information is still available at the fixedlvroads.com. The overhead projector in the community room, which was part of the capital improvement program, is installed, so there is a higher quality resolution available for any of the presentations in the room. And we just received a notification today from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation in regards to their making available to us to have a certified photographer come, and two of them, to do freelance photos of highlights within our community that we can use as part of our marketing program. So that's a free asset to us for being a part of the RRC program. So we're really happy about that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything?
Just caution you to stay away from skunks.
He's outside.
Nothing for me, the cliff's going to take care of him.
That was seriously it?
Yeah, I had nothing to say.
Any reports from boards, commissions, committees, versus not here, so?
I have nothing.
I have one.
I have nothing.
Oh, you don't have evidence, I was going to say, when SIMCOG was coming next, we are likely to be.
Just one for Southfield School Board Meeting, October 8th. I'll be attending that, and we will submit and review some information that council has discussed, and we want to discuss with them. So I'll be presenting that on the 8th. Okay?
Thank you. Any unfinished or new business?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on what City Administrator said, tomorrow's National Voter Registration Day. So if you know of anyone who's 18 or will be 18 by November 5th and is not registered to vote, please send them to the clerk's office. I also have an application on the website if they want to complete that as well. So we'll have a table with information on there concerning voting and in order to register to vote, how to do that, if you want to assist on Election Day and be a precinct inspector, I'll have that information for you as well. Also, due to Proposal 18-3 that passed last November, there have been several updates to election laws, and I'm going to go over a few. If you have any questions, always feel free to call me, and all of this information is on the website as well. So Monday, October 21st, is going to be the last day to register in any manner other than in person with your local clerk. So if you register by the 21st, you can register at the Secretary of State's office, via the state website, and I have voter registration information on the city's website as well. If you, after this date, anyone who qualifies and wants to be a registered voter with proof of residency that you live in the City of Lathrow Village, stop by the clerk's office. You must register there with me. That way, I can enter all your information into the system, and you'll be all set for Election Day. That is key. Anyone who registers after what used to be the close of registration date, you have to register in person at the clerk's office. Even if you go to the Secretary of State's office, they will give you a form to bring to me so that I can double-check everything and put you into the system, and that way on Election Day, you can just go right into the line and vote. The regular business hours, to stop by the clerk's office is Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30. As mentioned earlier, I will be here. The office will be open Saturday, November 2nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. You can come in and pick up your absentee ballot on that day. Also, the Election Day is November 5th. And I should back up a little bit because this has changed as well due to the new election laws. The last day that I can mail out absentee voter ballots will be Friday, November 1st, by 5:00 p.m. That date has changed. It used to be Saturday, Saturdays all the time. This time is Friday, November 1st, before 5:00 p.m. That is key. And try not to wait until that date because if your child or if you're out of town and I have to send it somewhere else, you have to give me enough time so that it can reach you and that you can send it back to me as well. November 4th, the day before the election, is the last day that you can vote absentee. But that has to be done in person in the clerk's office before 4:00 p.m. I will have ballots available to issue on October 1st, and that timeframe is anytime between 8:00 a.m. and 4:30. But often, I work late, so if you give me a call, my extension is 266, the number is 248-557-2600, give me a call, and if I'm here, you can come on in and feel free to pick up a ballot. So hopefully, I've answered most of your questions, if not all of your questions. So hopefully, I've answered most of your questions, if not all of your questions, but please give me a call if you have any further questions. Thank you. It's a lot. It's, it's different, but we'll get through it all. It's different, a little bit.
Is there, um, anything else that anyone has?
Just one, um, observation for, for the chief. So we, I think we experienced an accident on Latherville Boulevard right at 11 Mile Road over the weekend, or was it Friday, I believe?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so.
Especially, especially now that the, the lanes have narrowed, there are now, the, people that are exiting, the, the speed tends to be a lot higher. I wasn't sure if you were actually going to have, you know, maybe a patrol car out there or just, just to check it because they've just switched the, um, the two lanes from the far left over to the, or far right over to the far left, and now they're really coming off the freeway without slowing down.
We're trying to monitor traffic we have.
Yeah.
You know, we receive a number of complaints from residents who are passing, especially during, you know, the early morning and early evening hours.
Yeah.
It's very tough.
Yeah.
With the limited, uh, you know, limited lane, uh, lane exposure with the amount of traffic, and then where do you sit to try to, you know, um, catch a type of speeder or anything like that?
Right.
So we do our best.
Okay.
And hopefully, just our presence there will reduce the speed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's the goal. Because I'm glad they blocked the, the Latherville Boulevard going across 696. So that way, no one could try to jackrabbit over.
Right.
Because it's very dangerous. Okay, that's all for me. Thank you.
Take a motion for adjournment?
So move?
Yes.
I had a chance to.
Okay. He's in here.
An unfunded level of about 8.2 million. So is the plan to maintain both of those plans for the foreseeable future? And if so, how do, what's, what's the, what's the proposal?
They're all closed plans now.
Right.
So any, there's only five active employees there, will still be, will be in those plans, but that's it. Everybody else is, has been closed out. And we're, we talked about, um, this year, Cheryl and I, we had them put some money, or we did some designation of our funding allowance to start funding it.
So is there, so you're going to make up that 8.2 million?
You're not going to, you're not going to make it up. You're going to, you got to.
But, but the plan is to?
We have to come up with a plan. We, we have to come up with a plan to fund it. And we talked about that in the study session.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, this is a big amount now. We got to start funding this thing.
That's something we have to start thinking about.
Yeah, so we haven't come up with a concrete plan of how to do it yet, but we will.
And is there a way as a resident or as residents that we can, uh, view the most recent extra real valuation reports for each plan?
I don't think we posted them before, but there's no reason why we couldn't.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd love to look at them.
Usually, we post everything.
You might be the only one.
He'll be the only one.
Well, but, I mean, as residents, it may, you know, 8.29, if we're going to proceed with that, that's a big nut to, to cover, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get it, we'll get a copy of the reports. We'll try to, eh, Cheryl?
So I make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll be adjourned.
Could you, could you guys put, um, I, I think the resolution for the pastor tonight should actually go on the website as well.
Yeah, I think all the resolutions should go.
Yes, yes.
So therefore, we're doing them to create awareness and to recognize people, we should, like, have them posted wherever we can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Second?
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 Second. Oh, sorry.
It's been moved in second, and we are adjourned. Have a good night.
Thank you.